Amen, sir. Say amen.
Patrick, are we rolling?
You gotta get back there. Yeah. Let me know if you're rolling, okay? Thank you.
We are rolling.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending the special workshop meeting, September 12, 2018, at the Helen Halls of City of Prospect Heights in Council Chambers, located at 8 North Allenhurst Road, Prospect Heights, Illinois. The Council Chambers are here. I'm sorry, our roll call for a quorum, please.
Yes. Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Aye, here.
Alderman Dolick?
Here.
Alderman Messer?
Here.
And Alderman Ludwigson?
Here.
We have a complement of five, and that is the total quorum for our purposes tonight and for the rest of our lives. So, let's move on. What do we have?
We have a pledge of allegiance, sir.
All right. So, let's do that. Dan, you're gonna lead us with pledge of allegiance?
Sure, I can do that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
All right, so these are the minutes for approval.
Does she have another one?
Thank you.
Mayor, did you guys do a change? Yes. I didn't get a good copy.
What changed, Karen?
There's no change. It just said the last page. The last page is missing off the other.
Oh.
Oh, if I'd printed my own, I'd have it. Okay, here.
What? All right, let's move on with the approval of minutes, Joe.
First item is consideration of the August 27 minutes. Are there any additions, corrections, changes? And if not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of August 27.
So moved.
Second.
In a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next slide, Mr. Mayor, we have presentations. This is one of our newer city commissions, McDonald Creek presentation. And for a while, they're off to a good start, a combination of educational efforts as well as actual action work as to taking care of McDonald Creek. And tonight, we have a presentation from John Kinse about the, what the commission has achieved, committee has achieved.
Thank you, Mayor and Alderman, for entertaining me tonight. Presentation tonight will kind of focus on the higher level, things that the commission has been doing. Won't bore you with a lot of the details, so bear with me, please. So, the, start with kind of where we, you know, how far we've come. Some of the historical pictures of Prospect Heights flooding in the past for, you know, certainly myself, that, you know, doesn't go back quite as far as these just based on the pictures, you know. Certainly, the point to this is to really show that, you know, Prospect Heights has had flooding issues in the past. And certainly, I think we've come a long way since then. We don't see these same types of flooding events now. But it is safe to say that we are certainly in a time of change. And the high-level rainstorms seem to be, a hundred-year flood, a hundred-year rainfall seem to be happening more and more frequently. McDonald Creek, just a little bit more broad picture. McDonald Creek begins all the way up at Route 53 near Dundee Road. You know, it's a very large area. It's a 10-square mile. It's got a couple of branches, two tributaries, Tributary A, Tributary B. Tributary A runs from Old Country Club through the slough, Hillcrest Lake, and then it can, joins the mainstream at Walnut Woods at Palatine and Wheeling Road. Tributary B flows east from Wheeling Road, parallel to Euclid, for a mile through the Rob Roy Golf Course and Woodland Trails Park. Main channel is approximately six miles. Four miles of that is in the city of Prospect Heights. The formation of the commission in recognition of the maintenance and the flood control and bank stabilization of the McDonald's Creek and the tributaries through Prospect Heights. Alderman Rosenthal met with concerned residents, ultimately brought it to the city council in December of 2016 for the establishment of this commission. And so that's why I'm here before you tonight. Since the creation of the commission, we have developed a mission statement for the commission. With your support, then these will become our permanent mission statement. McDonald Creek Commission exists to improve, maintain the quality of the creek, and to educate and empower residents to appreciate the creek as an asset to the community. We'd like to see the creek viewed as an asset as opposed to a liability. We are fortunate that we have a creek, a waterway in many communities as viewed as an asset. Certainly, we're not talking about having a river walk necessarily like some communities have, but we do believe that it does have a lot more potential than what it has been viewed in the past. Some of the goals and strategies, we've broken it down to four with a little bit of elaboration of those fours, four specific goals. So, the first goal would be to educate, inform, and advocate. The city website, how we'll do that is through the city website newsletter, pamphlets for distribution to creekside resident. The second goal would be to address issues with water quality, water quantity, flooding, erosion, drainage, and infrastructure. We will attempt to assist village staff in the monitoring and collection of data, help to coordinate cleanup days in cooperation with public works. This is something that was done previously, under the previous McDonald Creek Commission, and certainly something that, there was value when that was performed previously. And we'd like to re-implement that with your support. The third goal would be to develop partnerships with neighboring communities and other related relevant agencies such as Arlington Heights, Wheeling, Mount Prospect, MWRD, Prospect Heights Natural Resource District, HOAs, et cetera. And the fourth, fourth goal would be to work with the city property owners and partners to restore the McDonald Creek to its natural vegetation and condition. Watershed, you know, what is a watershed? You know, watershed is basically all the water that runs into the creek. One thing that, the reason that I include this particular slide is that one of the things that the Creek Commission has tried to expand is that not only are the residents that immediately adjoin the creek, not only are they responsible or impacted by the creek, but all of us that live in Prospect Heights, essentially, all of our water drains into the creek. Whether it's directly or indirectly, you know, every one of us is a contributor to the creek and to the water that flows in the creek. Some people, you know, their water drains right into the creek. Some people's water drains onto their neighbor's yard. It drains to a ditch, drains through the ditches, through the culverts, under the roads, and ultimately, it drains to the same creek in a less direct matter, manner. The McDonald Creek tributary area, as you can see, Arlington Heights certainly has the most square mileage to the McDonald Creek. Prospect Heights is second there with 2.79 square miles of contributing land area to the McDonald Creek. And then Mount Prospect, Wheeling, Unincorporated, Cook County, Buffalo Grove, and then a small portion of Palatine as well. Purpose of that is really to highlight that Prospect Heights can't tackle this problem alone. We're not the sole contributor to it. Therefore, we shouldn't be expected to be the sole, sole organization to respond to it. That goes to the partnerships with other municipalities, other partners. McDonald Creek is the second-largest sub watershed in the Displanes River, this area. Surprisingly enough, I took this from the Christopher Burke 2011 study that was done at, for the Lower Displanes River Watershed Plan. What this shows, and the reason that I've highlighted, is that the McDonald Creek Commission serves hundreds of thousands of people. This is not just 16,000 people that are in Prospect Heights. This serves a very large area, and it certainly is something that is significantly larger than Prospect Heights. And with the population growth that's projected there, by 20, by 2030, it's gonna have another 5% growth of another 35,000 people that this area will drain to. One of the things that we're also trying to distinguish is that there's a difference between localized flooding and regionalized flooding. I understand that a large portion along the creek is in floodplain. Certainly, that is something that we have to recognize. And there's not a lot that we can really do directly without partnerships with FEMA and larger organizations. But there is also localized flooding. There's localized ponding that takes place on individual property, on individual properties. You know, you might call it nuisance flooding. This certainly is not an example of nuisance flooding necessarily. This is where the creek topped over, and this is a structure that's being flooded. This is a picture that we received earlier this year. So, this is not something of the past. This is something of today. Familiar flooding issue, certainly, I saw the Public Works Director out on Labor Day closing this road for this very reason. So, this is something that does continue. I understand that the city of Prospect Heights is working on elevating this roadway and alleviating this particular problem. And so certainly, I applaud the city for, you know, for taking the effort to start to make, recommend, starting to accomplish the recommendations that were made in the Lower Displanes River Watershed Plan. Certainly, this is an issue I think that all of us are familiar with on Willow Road. And so, the, how do we start with stewardship of water quality? This is a, the start of a presentation that we would ultimately like to provide to our residents. Our goal is to educate the residents on what they can do. You know, this is not entirely the city's problem. At the end of the day, a lot of the creek is private property. And it needs to be told, and it needs to be said to the residents that they have, they, they're stakeholders in this. They have to take responsibility for it as well. It's a partnership between the private property owners and the city. You know, it's easy to call the Public Works Director, call the city, and say, you know, "I've got a tree in my creek, and I'd like you to come out and remove it." Well, it's private property, and there's a balancing act that the administrator, that the staff has to play to say, you know, what portion of it is the city gonna take responsibility for? Or what can we do to really empower the residents to take responsibility for their own private property? And then what services can the city provide to really assist them with that? Same thing with MWRD. MWRD plays a role in this. They make an effort to help with this issue as well. But at the end of the day, their primary focus is the large blockages, and they're not gonna come for a six-inch branch that fell across the creek that somebody simply doesn't want to go down and remove themselves. And so, it's a matter of educating the residents that some of it, you have to take responsibility for yourself. That's the joy of homeownership. So, really recognizing that each one of us needs to do our part in preserving the streams and river corridors, managing the streamline of the streamside land in a manner consistent with public health and safety. Again, I highlight the significant population that the McDonald Creek Commission serves. It's 14 separate sub-basins ranging from .2 to 1.3 square miles. That's into that six square miles that was, or excuse me, 10 square miles that was mentioned earlier. Some of the graphics of things that really impact the quality of our water, impervious surfaces that drain water, you know, these are our driveways, our rooftops, other impacts that we have as residents, fertilizers, automotive, marine liquids, waste, things of that nature. And so, what, the previous slide had a link to the Prospect Heights Creek Commission website. We've done a good job over the last six months, over the last year, really, of putting a lot of this information online for our residents, to educate them about how they can use rain barrels, how they can use bio swales, how they can do rain gardens, rain barrels, what they can do on their individual property if they are a creek adjoining property. There's right ways and wrong ways to ultimately treat the edge of the creek. One of the common practices, not only in Prospect Heights, but I think in every, in every area, you know, a lot of people see the creek as a dumping ground. And some people are as blatant as dumping garbage, household garbage. Other people are less blatant, and they dump their grass clippings, their branches, and things like that at the top of the bluff because that's, you know, a place to get rid of it. Ultimately, what that does is that contributes to erosion. And so, this is the information that we would like to get out to our residents to educate them that, you know, what happens when you dump, when you dump stuff on the top of the creek, it kills all the vegetation. The vegetation's gone, the dirt starts to slide and starts to erode. So, previous slide was, you know, what you should not do. You know, this is a slide of what really should be done. Ultimately, the goal is to get homeowners to make responsible decisions where they can, and then the city to ultimately contribute and help wherever they feel necessary. What we see our role as the McDonald Creek Commission is, is to educate the residents, to help increase the communication between residents and village staff and, excuse me, and MWRD. Over the past year, we've attended a few different grant session, grant informational sessions held by congressmen in the area. We're familiar with some of the grants that MWRD offers with grants, larger grants that Open Lands and those types of organizations have to assist both public property owners and private property owners. And we'd like the support to continue to work with village staff and as well as to provide some financial resources as necessary to print these types of materials to get out to our residents. So, that's, and then this slide, the slideshow does continue on. Really, what this slideshow is, is really more intended for the general public. And so, what we'd like to also do in the future is to have some type of educational sessions for our residents where we would ultimately educate them on what they, what they should be doing on their individual property owners, whether they're adjoining to the creek or they're just contributing to the creek indirectly, on things that they can do, whether it's through the rain barrels, the bio swales. And so, these are examples of what happens when a creek goes unmanaged. And so, you know, this, again, this is really more intended for the, a highlight of what we would like to show to the public at some point in the future when we set up these informational meetings. With the primary goal of minimizing stormwater runoff, the reduction and prevention of pollutants entering the stream, to create native plant buffers, working with the Prospect Heights Natural Resource Commission, to start putting in native plantings on both public and private property, really with the goal of bringing back the natural vegetation, which was the fourth goal of the commission. And so, these are just pictures and examples of best practices, examples of the, what native plants really do, the difference between a native plant and a turf grass, basically. You know, a lot of residents, you know, would like to claim as much of their property as yard space as possible. They mow all the way to the creek. Turf grass has two- or three-inch roots, whereas native plants, as shown in this picture, can typically go down five, six feet, and they do a much better job stabilizing the creek. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell. You know, and this, you know, these just continue on with, you know, kind of simple, simple terms that anybody can understand on things that they can do on their individual property, you know, how to drain a pool, you know, what they should, should not be disposing of into waterways, whether it's directly into the creek, whether it's into their storm drains for the curb and gutter sections of the community, and into the ditches in the rural cross-section, sections of the creek. Really, I think the best example of best practices is what was done at the River Trails Park District on the south side of Prospect Heights, just north of Wolf and Kensington, or excuse me, Wolf and Euclid. You know, we'd like to see that kind of expanded throughout Prospect Heights, all the way up the four miles of Prospect Heights, realizing that that's a large aspiration. It's not gonna happen in the next one, one to two years. But it's a long-term plan that we believe to be viable, and that starts the concept of treating the creek as an asset as opposed to a liability.
Questions?
John, thank you. Quick question for you. When you reference the Mount Prospect area over by River Trails, what exactly have they done? I know they built that bridge area over by the park and kind of stabilized the creek bed at certain points to the left and right of it. But have they done much more to it?
They have added, at the base of the, at the base of the creek, they've added the Ajax, the stacking of the concrete blocks. There's different methods of doing that. There's the Gambian baskets, which are the wire baskets filled with rock. They've done a lot of various best practices on that section. That was, that was mostly paid for by MWRD. So, it was a matching grant between Mount Prospect or the River Trails, River Trails Park District and MWRD that ultimately created that. And then they planted the native plants down the slopes. They put in a kind of a rock tow where every culvert comes down and discharges into the creek so that it doesn't just erode away the land. And so, that practice is what we'd like to see at the Prospect Heights Park District property. You know, they haven't taken the same initiative to do the same, to do the same practices. So, certainly, I think it starts by the city doing it or leaning on the other taxing bodies to try to get them to do the same on their public property. And let's lead by example. If we're gonna ask our residents to kind of do that, do the same thing, the best way to do that is to do it on the public property first. Use those as models or as case studies for how the individual private property owners can do the same. What they're doing in Lake County, you know, Lake County Stormwater Management, which is where I got a lot of this information, you know, they do native plant sales, and so they do a subsidized plant sale to the residents where you can buy those native plants and plant them on your own, on your own private property. And so, those are all potential opportunities that Prospect Heights has as well. I think in partnership with, whether it's the Prospect Heights Natural Resource Commission, whether it's through the city directly or through some other nonprofit. Open Lands is certainly always willing to work with communities and private property owners to do that same type of thing.
Have you had any conversations with the Natural Resources Commission yet?
We have. We've had some, at least one of their members has been attending a lot of our meetings over the past year. Jill Moskell has been attending. Certainly, we've had some conversations with them. They did invite us to their last kind of public gathering, if I can say it that way, and so forth. So, we've had some communications, but not a formal partnership as of yet, sir.
Okay. I mean, 'cause they're, they make themselves very accessible, and they're very open.
Absolutely.
I would, you know, I would think that they would be very welcoming of what you're talking about, stabilizing banks using native plants. They have a plethora of native plants, so.
Yes, sir. We are familiar with the work that they've been doing in the slough and some of the other areas around the community, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Alderman Messer?
I have no questions.
Alderman Dolick?
No questions, thank you.
Alderman Rosenthal?
First of all, thank you for the report. It was very comprehensive and, I believe, well-organized. What action would, are you expecting, or would you want to see the council take at this point?
I think the really, the thing we're looking for tonight is really support to continue what we've started. And we will continue to do, continue to try to build a base of volunteers, continue to try to provide information out to the residents, both creek, property owners along the creek, but as well as the community at large. Certainly, you know, I think we'll focus on, initially, on the properties that are joining the creek, but then ultimately, at some point, we'd like to expand it out to the rest of the residents for, you know, all those other things that we talked about, the rain barrels, the, you know, the pay attention to seal coating when you're fertilizing. Those apply to all of us. You know, when I fertilize my grass, even though I don't live along the creek, if it rains and two hours later, it's gonna wash into the ditch, and the ditch is gonna flow down to the creek ultimately at some point. And so, all of us are a party to it. And so, really what we're looking for is, is support for us to continue to work with staff and ultimately provide some financial resources as needed moving forward. I think the overall goal, that message that I would like to say is that, you know, there's four legs to the stool, as I see it. When, you know, it's, when you talk about infrastructure, roads is the biggest thing that everybody talks about. You know, everybody wants new roads, but we know there's water, there's sewer, and there's stormwater. And stormwater is one that doesn't get the same type of priority. It doesn't get the same type of funding, and it's something that we need to start looking at. You know, maybe we're not spending as much on stormwater as we are on roads, but there needs to be some portion as we're dedicating money to road because stormwater is, creates a deterioration of your roads. The one that we saw on Willow where the water is topping the road, not only is the water topping the road, but obviously means there's no road base there left anymore because the water has undermined it. So, that same way, you know, all we're asking for is that stormwater is viewed as one of the critical infrastructures in this community as well in addition to stormwater, or excuse me, in addition to sanitary sewer, public water, as well as road. So, that's the fourth leg there.
If it's appropriate, I would like to put forth a motion that we support the work that they're doing going forward and that as they move forward with various things, they continue their coordination and communication with the Natural Resources Commission and the city, particularly through the Public Works Commission. If that's an appropriate motion at this time, I'd like to make it.
We have a motion on the floor. Calls for a second.
I'll second the motion.
We have a second. Any further discussion? We'll go with a voice vote. Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Alderman Ludwigson?
Yes, thank you for the report. My only question is, do you have a spot picked out on the public land? Do you guys have, like, in the back of your mind, something that you?
Somerset Park, I think, is an area of concern that we've seen that I honestly...
That's kind of a big.
A big area?
Big area.
Well, one of the things that I can see that I will say is a little bit of a concern there is I think that Prospect Heights Park District, or somebody, whether it's their employees, a contractor, et cetera, somebody is doing, one of the examples that I said earlier, of dumping the, basically, the landscape waste at the top of the, top of the ravine, top of the creek. You know, that, that needs to end. And really, you know, beyond just stopping that behavior, you know, I think that if they can try to replicate what was done at the River Trails Park District, I think that sets a good, a good model that ultimately, we can look to, point to our residents and say, "This is what you can do on your property as well." Over time, that you can naturally bring back a vegetated slope as opposed to a, you know, a dirt drop-off that has roots exposed that eventually just gets wider and wider and creates more and more sediment that ultimately fills the channel.
How, how big was that project for River Trails? Dollar-wise? Do you know? Did you see the grant?
We did see the grant. Honestly, I didn't prepare the specific numbers, but certainly, that's something.
Was it hundreds of thousands or tens of thousands?
It was a few hundred thousand dollars.
That was a 50-50 grant?
No, I don't believe it was 50-50. I wanna say it was a 75-25, and so certainly, the local match was significantly smaller than the 50-50. From what I understand from the presentation that MWRD did at one of our commission meetings, they have an excess of grant money. It's just a matter of finding local partners to ultimately, you know, they do want a local partner to put something in it, so it's not free money that is ultimately, it's invested into a project, and then nobody maintains it because there's no local money at stake there. And so certainly, that's why the, I think, the local partnership is requested on a lot of grants, is to make sure that we have a vested interest to maintain it long-term, basically.
Thank you.
President Tibbetts? Clerk Wendy Morgan?
I have nothing.
Last for Alderman Rosenthal.
Have you had any conversations yet with the city on getting that stuff on the website? Is that happening?
All of that, yes, sir. We have, most of the, most of the information that I showed tonight is on the website. We have probably at least a dozen to 15, possibly more brochures of best practices that residents can do on their individual property.
And it is on the website?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My final thing is, is this something that our administrators should undertake with the Park District since there is a problem there being created?
Well, I was just gonna suggest, we have, we've developed very good relationships with MWRD, and certainly, the Park District has always been a great governmental partner. I'd be happy to talk to both, both agencies to see maybe if we can use that model from River Trails, see what might be possible for Prospect Heights. And I also know from our director that, our Prospect Heights Park Director, Christina Ferraro, it's my understanding Somerset Park has been something that they, the Park District has been reviewing. So, and nobody likes erosion. So, we'd be happy to carry that. You did a nice job with the report, and if there's things that we can do to help, that's what we're here for.
Thank you.
Public Works Director Asco?
Thank you, Mr. Helmer, Mayor Helmer. I think that John and Kathy and the team of commissioners are doing a great job moving forward, trying to put together and resurrect this team to work through these issues. I've talked to John quite a few times, and we're on the right page. Working with the Park District on those different types of land is really the right way to go. If there's anything I can do helping out with the Somerset Park questions. But I'm excited that John and Kathy and the other commissioners are moving forward and educating our residents. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson, anything from your area?
No, I think the statement earlier in the presentation that the education of the private property issues and the buy-in of the residents, because during the most recent events... events, they were looking to us to be the end-all, be-all to help their problems that are realizing that they, there are things that they could do to help their own situation. I think working in partnership and getting that message out is huge. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any last questions by anyone? Thank you, John. You did a great job tonight. I appreciate your input. You're very knowledgeable. You know more than most of us do and it's good to be educated also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Joe?
All right. Which brings us tied at six and this is an error. We're not, this is not on the agenda. We're, it's a mistake in six A. So, which brings us to seven, public.
Let me just explain that. The six A was intended to get the notice out to the Alderman, a pre-notice for possible appointments to the downtown redevelopment group, which I will offer next meeting. It wasn't intended to be on this issue. It wasn't intended to be on this agenda. All right.
Thank you. Which brings us to item seven, public concerns and comments. Do we have anything?
We don't have anything tonight.
Which brings us to eight, staff elected officials and commission reports. Mr. Mayor?
Well, we have elected officials. Alderman Lovickson, please.
No report at this time.
Alderman Delig.
I have no report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Oliverin Rosenthal.
I've had several meetings and discussions with the Rob Roy Association Board. They're looking forward to the street repairs anxiously and I think the question I just would have, if I can either get the statement from either the superintendent or our engineer as to when they, you expect to start. I've been telling them it's later this month. The latest data I have.
The pre-construction meeting scheduled for tomorrow.
Okay.
With the contractor and we'll have a very good idea on schedule after that. I wouldn't be shocked if they start by, end of next week, give or take, or the following week. Now, they'll probably move in a certain direction, either west, east of town, or north to south, but it will be very active over.
And there'll probably be some notice, I would expect.
Yeah, we will always send out notices to affect the residents like we do on all projects and we'll be well aware of the sequencing and the stage of construction. It'll be very active mid-September through October.
Good. Thank you. And another thing I've been involved with on my own, I took it upon myself to do, with regard to the home rule activity, I developed a proposal, a PowerPoint presentation, I should say, which I shared with the Home Rule Committee. That gave me some comments and suggestions, which I incorporated and then finalized that and that was sent to that committee. I sort of gave them the rights to the presentation and it's authored, as far as I'm concerned, by the Home Rule Committee. And anybody who wants to see it is certainly welcome to it. If there is no objection, I'd like to send it to the members of the council for their review and their comment.
So just for clarification, you're doing this as a private citizen and not as a...
I'm doing it as a private citizen, yes. So without any objection, I will send that out.
All right. Alderman Masterson.
Thank you, Mayor. Since I was out of the country for the last meeting, I just wanted to quickly state that I was pleased to see the contract with Connor for the Piper Lane property get approved when I watched the meeting online. I know Matt and I personally met with the representatives from IG. Several council members visited IG's Addison, Illinois site, whether on their own or otherwise. We received calls, listened to the residents and all their concerns. The written contracts from both Connor and IG were reviewed and other steps were taken and factors considered by the council as part of the due diligence process. The use and long-term benefits from the Connor contract should be a better fit for our community. While finances are always a factor considered, more money upfront doesn't always equate to a better offer. So for these reasons and the many others stated at the prior meeting, which I won't waste anyone's time repeating, I do believe it was the best decision for the city and look forward to working with Connor moving forward. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Alderman Williamson.
I'd like to ask on item number nine, which topics we intend on talking about tonight? There are six of them and I don't know that we have time to discuss all six.
Yes, I think they're pretty much in order. Stormwater project selection discussion, that's a carryover from the last meeting. As we discussed, that's why Engineer Perez is here tonight. We've refined some information. He's ready to make a recommendation for us to, to pick a project and possibly even prioritize the second project. Piper property sale proceeds, that's as a request by council. Safe routes to schools, that was from information that Mayor Helmer sent. We can briefly address that probably in five minutes. And home rule, we have carried really since last spring, as well as carryover items of organization operation, city council, city investments. Our last discussion of that was to, to invite the police pension fund, probably within, coming up month of October would be a good time for them to make their presentation.
Okay. If I could ask council if we, are you okay with talking about A, B, and C?
I think we have to, because we have action on C. Is that the general?
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Outside of that, I have no report. Thank you.
All right, staff, the reports. Mr. Peterson, you're first.
Thank you, Mayor and council. It's been a busy couple of weeks. Do you want to let everybody know I've been in almost daily communication with the Contractor for River Trails Condominium Association and was informed today that they did receive their Cook County demolition permits for the buildings on McIntosh Court, so that will be moving forward. They will be meeting with us later this week to get the contract registered and those demolition permits finalized. There is still review of building 13 going on to see if it meets the FEMA 50% rule, whether it can stay or whether that also has to be demolished. But progress is moving quickly now that the contractor miner in East is on board and have selected all their staff. We did get, receive information that McDonald's is back on timing track. They had a little hiccup last week with some wet soils out in their parking lot during their engineering, so they got that resolved and are moving forward. We've had two new home permits come in and we're just keeping busy. So, it's been a busy month here in the department, so. Any further questions, just to let people know.
Mr. Asco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've had a week of excellent weather. It's outstanding.
Why did you have to say that?
It's, I have to because it's so enjoyable to get work done and move forward. We've done a lot of rotting of storm pipes on Waterman Olive and on Fairway. We've done some tree removal this week. We have line striping going on on Old Willow, Wheeling Road, some by our metro lot. We have some crosswalks we're going to be doing the next couple of days also. And of course, mowing, a lot of mowing and building services. So, Public Works is moving forward very well this week. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. If it rains tomorrow, it's your fault.
It will not.
Mr. Falcone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just an informational item for the council. It was staff's intention to get some home rule information out in the next newsletter, some home rule and the home rule referendum prior to the November elections. There is some concern that the newsletter will not be out in time. So at the direction of the mayor, what we're going to do is we're going to do a special mailing. It'd be a, kind of like a mini newsletter, if you will, that will just particularly pertain to home rule, primarily informational for our residents, of course, with some questions and answers and frequently asked questions. So, that will be coming shortly. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to staff.
Peter, let's be sure that we also note the public meetings we're going to have. I think, Joe, you've got two planned. Go ahead.
Yes, correct. We, we have two planned and we're trying to formalize dates, the town hall meeting format. One, we're looking at the Morava Center, another one at the City Hall. We'd also like to get into the neighborhoods of our community as well and working with the Home Rule Citizens Committee, we'd like to do, do an evening at Rob Roy and possibly one at Quincy Park, River Trails, basically to make sure that we're, we represent the city geographically.
Let's get that in for the flyer, too. Peter, how soon can we see a draft, do you think?
As soon as we get the information, we could put something together. I could have it out. If I get the information quick enough, we could have it out before October 1st.
All right. Thank you. Chief Stefan? Are you still here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got a couple of things. First and foremost, we closed out our summer outreach program last Monday with the, with the government day. We had this scheduled at the beginning of the year, but it got rained out. But what I'd like to do is thank the Arlington Bike Club, Tom Drebin, president, who supplied almost 50 helmets to young people from the east side of town so that they could safely pedal from one side of town to the other. And they did an outstanding job and I think we had almost 40 kids attend on Monday. Also, I'd like to give out another, another shout-out to another community member, Mr. Jim Kelly, who is taking point with helping fire victims get furniture for their apartments, for their new apartments. And through his efforts and St. Al's and partnered with other community agencies and other social service providers, they've been able to supply over 20 fire victim families with basic good quality furniture for their apartments. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Kelly is doing a heck of a job. I mean, he's delivering furniture, he's helping people and your social workers are handing out cars. I mean, this is an effort that I said from the beginning, will that be over in two weeks? It's going to be over maybe a year or two, maybe. That depends on the reconstruction and so on. Alderman Tibbets. Oh, I promoted you. I'm sorry. Treasurer Tibbets.
It's hard to know what to call myself sometimes, myself, but in any case, I wanted to report that I've done quite a bit of research in the last couple of weeks regarding how other communities are implementing home rule and comparing what they're doing to each other, plus what we already can do. And I think it's kind of revealing as to when you start looking at the data, look, you know, comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges, it is a telling story. So I think we've got some good information to share with the community as to what home rule really would, could, I would say, not would necessarily, but could mean to Prospect Heights. So, the other thing, we were noticing that somebody up on the dais has got a cell phone that's on vibrate and so it's vibrating on the desk and it's actually going through the base of the microphones and it's, you know, real obvious. So, if you have a cell phone that's on vibrate on the desk, please put it in your pocket. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Very, very good because you remind me of one of my teachers. He never said you.
Right.
He said someone, someone is doing it. All right. Thank you. Any other reports we should hear? If not, Joe, can we move on?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're at item nine. I'm sorry, are there any other staff reports? Did we hit everybody? Okay.
I've already done, yeah.
Very good. All right. Discussion topics for workshop meeting. Nine A, this is a continuation of previous discussion, stormwater project selection. And as, as I think everybody in council knows, there's a few areas in Prospect Heights, I think it, even if it threatens to rain, it starts to, starts to flood. And Engineer Perez has reviewed volumes of previous stormwater management reports from various engineering firms. Part of the problem is we've never had the, previously, we didn't have the financial resources to do, do, do what is needed. But tonight, he's, he's gone through the previous areas that have been studied, just concept studies, and he has a recommendation for actually getting in and taking on a stormwater management project that would, I think, significantly help a neighborhood or two. And at that, I'll introduce City Engineer Steve Perez.
Thank you. Hopefully, exhibits can be seen. I apologize, I've forgotten that we didn't have, that we didn't see the exhibits well enough. I'm going to get on my side. This is a good spot to start for this. I'm going to start with the Arlington Countryside area and then as the council desires, if we have time left, I'll turn to the second party in my eyes, which is the east Tibbets area. So, the Arlington Countryside area, I define as a triangle, pretty much Ran, Olive, it would take open in the south, so, west of Ran Road. Should I turn that? So this area's been studied, as Joe said, many times in the past. There's probably at least three studies. And these studies that are done are what I would call master planning level studies. And they all have come up with five or six different options. They could be a range of things. I think what I'm recommending and what I've heard is let's focus on what we believe slash I believe is the best option to take to the next step and actually construct. So that's kind of where my presentation will go today. I feel that a great option, the best option for Arlington Countryside is to increase what they call the conveyance system, which is a larger storm sewer system. That is one option that's been brought up in all the other reports. So with that, there's different ways and on this sheet I'm trying to highlight where a new storm sewer could go. Arlington Countryside, a lot of it's a bowl, so water sits in it and just doesn't get out over land. Right now, there is a storm sewer that connects through Arlington Heights. Back in about 2000, these green lines are storm sewers. There was a new storm sewer, I think around 2005, through Arlington Countryside. One of the issues is it's restricted at Ran Road right now with a 12-inch sewer, whereas the new sewer that was put in through here was at least 21 inches in diameter. So there's a current restriction. And why is that? Back when the storm sewer was installed, no other communities want other communities' water. It's just a fact of life. So, Arlington Heights doesn't want more of your water, Cook County Highway doesn't want more of your water, and Hyatt doesn't want more of your water. And those are the agencies that control east of you and downstream, just like you don't want anyone upstream of you. So, they wouldn't allow more water to go through, so they said, well, let's at least do some improvement because you got to start somewhere. So now is the next phase of improvement. How do we increase the conveyance to McDonough Creek tributary watershed? So with that, we could install a new storm sewer that would almost run all the way most likely down to McDonald, kind of to the, or to the school property, to the creek and then have discharge in McDonough Creek. So that's a way to increase the conveyance of the stormwater flow out of Arlington Countryside. Now with that, the magic question is, well, what size and what impacts does that have? So what I'm proposing is that we do the next study, not a master planning, do a focused, what I'll call a concept engineering study of what size storm sewer and what benefits it'll provide and what costs are associated with those benefits. So what I'm proposing is that we do a concept engineering study that would evaluate most likely a two-year storm event, a five-year, a 10-year storm event, 50- and 100-year storm event. And it would size that storm sewer for each event, we'd assign a cost to it, what effect or what, you know, how it could, as part of that study, we need to show in concept level if it may increase the creek downstream at all, elevation during flood. It may not, but that's never been looked at, so that's one part of the concept study we need to look at, too, in concept. And then after we get those results of that study, come back and say, well, now we have a program for three or four options of the size of a storm sewer with the benefits to the residents and then decide on funding levels of where to go. And then the next logical step from there would do engineering drawings, which are the detailed plans from there that shows the storm sewer exact routing, if it would be under pavements, it would be under grass, any conflicts along the way that we'd have to, so the detailed plans. And then after the plans... And then after the plans, assuming everything's still in line with funding, then we'd bid the project and then construct it. So it's the logical step. In the past, what's mostly been done is just the concept stormwater master plan. So now I said we did the targeted focus plan for this area. I've highlighted on here kind of a pink line, because this area up in here, kind of north, well, I'd say mostly east of Ran, also has some concerns with flooding. And there's a chance we'll look at our study and say, is there an interconnection that we can make to this new storm sewer that could benefit more residents up here with maybe a smaller connection? So we're gonna try to do a group study a little bit, too, to see where we can get our most bang for our buck. I'm guessing that's kind of my initial presentation on kind of the storm sewer option. You know, there is that twelve inch restrictor on Ran, that is the thing, we will not, and I anticipate that. The storm sewer that we currently have, which travels through here and goes to the creek, we'll leave that. We will have a second storm sewer system. So we're gonna have the benefit of what was already installed and a second new parallel slash, it might be slightly different alignment, but we'll have two storm sewer systems that 'll help the area, and that'll be in our model, too. I think I'll open it to questions, but maybe I'll answer one question I know I'll get. What's this gonna cost? Well, I said there's five targeted options of size of storm sewer, but to me, the relative range is around one point five million. I mean, obviously, the hundred-year storm sewer may be a sixty-inch storm sewer that's needed, whereas the two-year might only be a twenty-four-inch storm sewer. So obviously, there's a big cost difference. And what we'll show you is the cost of it and the benefits, and then we can make an educated decision as a group and as a city.
What would be the cost of the study?
One at a time, please.
The cost of the concept study, probably eighteen to twenty thousand.
How much?
Eighteen to twenty thousand.
Can we start down with Mr. Dillard, please?
Thank you. First of all, I believe you mentioned it earlier. What other departments would be involved in that? You mentioned IDOT as well as...
Yeah, IDOT controls Ran Road. So even if we're, they wouldn't allow us to connect to their storm sewer, but we still have, would need to talk to them about going, installing a new storm sewer in their right-of-way. And then Camp McDonald Road is owned by Cook County Highway Department, so similar situation there. We'd have to talk to Cook County for approval to install a new storm sewer in there right-of-way. But again, we wouldn't most likely be able to use their existing storm sewer, because that's sized for their road. But those approvals would be done, we would talk very briefly with them in the concept engineering study, but they'd be more in the engineering plan study development, where you would really talk with those agencies in great detail. But we'd still talk to them at the beginning stage.
Okay, thank you. Other than that, just a quick comment. I'm pleased to see that a plan is at least being discussed, rather than just hypothetical situations. It seems like this would serve a good portion of our community, and I would be looking forward to an additional study being moved forward on this. But thank you very much for the presentation.
Alderman Messer?
Steve and I have talked about flooding probably several times over the past few years, so I mean, I think he's got a plan. I think we need to move forward at some point, so we need to decide if we're prepared financially to move forward. But I trust his judgments, he's the expert. I think if we're gonna do something about it, we need to start looking into how we can move forward and get it done.
Oliver Williams?
Steve, thank you. Good presentation, I look forward to the next part of it. I agree with Alderman Messer completely. I think it's high time that we start doing something, and let's get there.
Thank you, Alderman Rosenthal.
I asked my question already. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Ludvigson.
Yes, do you, Steve, you talk about picking up, like Dorset's got a big problem. That road's underwater in a ten-year event or fifty-year event, whatever it might be that we have every few years. So you're gonna try and size this in order to maybe pick up some of that, or be able to interconnect up?
We're gonna look at that as an option, yes.
What about, it just seems like there's a lot of agencies to deal with, and I know you deal with them all the time. Is there any reason why we wouldn't try and put this through as much of Prospect Heights as possible, so we're only dealing with ourselves? Since you're passing through those areas anyway, they do have a problem. And it might be a little longer route to get there, but at least we would control its destiny.
I think that's a great suggestion.
And I, on a concept engineering drawup, but yes, you might come up north, possibly down Olive, down Dale, or come show them what's coming.
Right, we definitely at some point touch somebody, but touching one person like Cook County Highway, the problem versus IDOT, Arlington Heights, you know, gets to be covered.
I showed kind of the straightest line, but yes, I think we'll definitely evaluate an option going north and east.
And by doing that, you can pick up some other areas immediately that would be problematic. I always have a hard time gauging, looking at water and then trying to picture myself a half mile away, saying, what's the difference? You know, the water is at zero, obviously, that's that level. Is there enough pitch? Because I know that Arlington Countryside has a bowl, you know, or basin, whatever you wanna call it, off a forest. Even in the oldest Army Corps documents, or before that, going back a hundred years, I saw a drawing or a sketch of the basin that's there of water. Is it, is there gonna be any need, as you see right now, I know you still have to do your study, that we're gonna have to lift this water, or?
No, I don't believe so. Some of the past studies mentioned lift stations, but they mentioned it more to get the existing systems that on Ran that were shallow or storm sewers. So I don't believe we would need a lift station, and that is not a component that I, if it comes back the other way. But the study showed that a gravity-fed system still could get to where it's going. I've looked at the topography myself and believe it can work just by looking at it, you know, in the short time. And then also, with my discussions with Mark Roscoe, just talking about what he's seen with his own eyes of where the flooding has occurred and to what depth. I've looked at a few, like the gap.
Not right around the gas station, but right around here, where the levels of what he's seen for pounding made sense with what we could do. So even based on what I was hearing from him and my experience in putting it together, you know, I feel comfortable that lift station would not be needed. I think one thing that will be an issue is possibly conflict with other storm sewers. That's sometimes the issue, when you've got parallel lines trying to get to the same spot. But that can resolve with junction chambers and other things, but they do.
Storm sewers and water, I mean?
Yeah, I mean, water mains, believe it or not, are easy to adjust. They're just dollars, but it's, you know, sanitary sewers are a different issue, but I think they're probably deep enough. And given that Cook County's already got a forty-eight inch sewer or fifty-four, I think, on Camp McDonald, I know it will fit. It's just the exact elevation. But that would come, we would touch on that on the concept engineering study, just to make sure it's possible. Where you get to the nitty-gritty would be the detailed engineering plans to evaluate the outcome.
So the initial study, the concept study, eighteen, twenty thousand, gets us to the point where you do the math to say, we don't need a lift station, we can convey this water, we're compliant with what we need to be compliant with. You've had preliminary conversations with IDOT and Cook County, and you've got a plan and all you then have to do is do the engineer, the drawings themselves, the engineering itself.
Correct.
And then that would be about, what does that usually run, like ten percent of the project cost?
Yeah, probably. As a project goes up, it would be a less percentage. I mean, it might be.
And if you do that, if we get to the point where you do the actual engineering drawings, what is the shelf life for those? And I say that because we're trying to do this linear progression, knowing money is coming from something else, but we would have enough to do the actual engineering, but then you might wait six, eight months before you could bid it out, or maybe even a year.
Yeah, I mean, years, I'd say. I mean.
The concept is first.
If you went from concept to the detailed engineering, you know, depending on if you decided to pull the permits for it and how far you got, but, you know, years, three, five years. If it got that far out, you might have to dust off and just do like five percent more work to get the engineering plans up to the current standards, because some construction standards change over three to five years. But it's not, I mean, it's common for engineering plans to sit for a few years to get funding.
But there are no MWRD wholesale changes in design criteria that are coming down the pipe that you could say, hey, in two thousand and twenty-two, everything's gonna be different.
I don't know of anything substantial right now that I've heard of.
All right, thank you.
Steve, the possibility of a second line that you pointed out, both lines will be resized to a larger diameter?
Yeah, the new lines.
Okay, and they're going to go to McDonald Creek. What will McDonald Creek need to be done to handle the extra flow of water?
We will have to take a concept look on that to see if it doesn't increase the water levels.
Right.
They allow a slight increase in water levels, and this is a small drainage area that we're talking about bringing to McDonald Creek, which is a large drainage area. So that has never been looked at in any of the studies I've seen, to see, it's been mentioned in concept that it might increase the water levels a little bit, but that's something we'll have to look at to see if it does, and if it does, to what extent, and see. That has not been looked at. So that is the final piece that we'll have to look at to make sure there is no significant adverse effects to McDonald Creek or downstream.
All right, thank you, Alderman Rosenthal.
Just a follow-up on the mayor's question, then. As you look at that impact with McDonald Creek, are you taking into account if there's what erosion and what ways that erosion can be prevented?
I mean, this improvement wouldn't affect erosion, in my eyes, along McDonald Creek. Any outlet we have would be protected for erosion there, and the small amount of increased flow is not gonna add, in my eyes, any adverse effect on erosion on McDonald Creek. That's a separate issue. I wouldn't believe this project would have any adverse effects to that.
Mr. Mayor, one more question or comment. This already is designated, that might be the wrong term to use, but the water coming out of Arlington Countryside is already designated to hit the creek at that location.
Yeah.
Small drain system that we have now already goes there, and any improvement, you'd be told by anybody, is designed to go there, because that's.
Correct.
It has to get to eventually.
Correct, it goes there. And, you know, depending where, if the concept study moves forward, one thing that we may do, depending when we get into it, we may look at, and this is probably a one in fifty shot, but. We may say, you know what, this storm sewer that's there, it could be increased at the same location, and that's more cost-effective than a new. Do I think that's likely? No. For me, the existing Cook County system's fifty-four, and we go to them, the city goes, hey, we can build an eighty-inch sewer that's our benefit, maintains yours, and it's cheaper for the project. You know, is that an outside shot? Yes, but it's something we would take a look at as another option.
And just to follow up, Steve and I have gone to the county highway department previously, and I would say that we've broached cooperative arrangements with them. And their philosophy is to be helpful. Obviously, they're not gonna spend any money for things that benefit the city, but they will cooperate in at least the use of their right-of-way and such, so.
Is there any opportunities for matching grants for this project?
I don't know any, and I've heard of very few, if any, stormwater. A lot of communities around here have spent hundreds of millions, some, and I know very little of any grants they've received, so.
We routinely check on those, and we have contacts, and we also have a grant advisor, and we do that, but not to our knowledge. I think it's viewed as, this is a local problem.
All right, yes, sir.
To Alderman Ludvigson's point, you know, you're saying that that water is designed to go to the creek, but it's not going to the creek now. Now, to Steve, your point, I know that at the end of, at the north end of Elm Street that goes, travels between Camp McDonald and Palatine Road, the two homes at the end of that street and the end of that street are underwater in less than hundred-year flood conditions. So when you say you're adding a minimal amount of water, you're still going to add no, you know, enough water that it's gonna creep inches, feet closer to the homes or into the home, and you're gonna have more water. I'd ask that as you're doing this, you know, you just be conscious of the levels, because if it's gonna impact these flooding conditions further, you know, I'd hate for that to be the threshold that is somebody's house underwater or not.
All right, anyone else? Thank you, Steve.
Do you want me to discuss east side?
Please, yes.
Okay.
I don't know if exhibits are as helpful, but I guess I'll go. East Side Tiff District's a little more, I'd say, complex, and the reason why there's more complexity is the buddy wall brings a level to it. And. So this there, I define kind of the east side, Cal Pine Road on north, Milwaukee Avenue, and Old Willow, pretty much east of Long. But there's a variety of storm sewer systems in here, a variety of developments that were built in a time where detention was an afterthought for the sites in general and under different standards than definitely were today. If these properties were developed today, it would be, look a lot different, but that's the past. So it does have challenges. The options here, this, I found a study from seventy-four that I just found a week and a half ago that I didn't know existed, it was buried in the office. And there's one from two thousand and twelve, and also then eleven thirty-seven. So, or maybe it was eighty-seven, sorry, eighty-seven, the one that I found. I think improvements here are still probably gonna be possibly an option of things. It might be increased pumping capacity. It might be, I'm throwing this out hesitantly, a detention area. I think there is still a little bit of open land. I think it's owned by the Park District. Is that correct, Mark? Is that what we figured?
Correct.
It could be some of that that could be thought about here, and it could be increased storm sewer. And then dovetail on the pumping, it could be more pumping capacity to get over the wall, too. So it's kind of interior pumping and I'll call exterior pumping capacity. So it's definitely not, it's cut and dry in my eyes of which option is there. Obviously, the levee wall was, affects this area greatly and affects a lot of, even Mount Prospect. You know, that was decades of a study. I've only looked at it very, very briefly, because that was designed by Army Corps of Engineers and predates my time. But there was a study done in two thousand and fifteen for Mount Prospect. They engaged Christopher Burke Engineering to do a study. And I've had engineers in my office take a concept look at that just recently. And I think we could dovetail off of that study to bring more improvements to Prospect Heights, and specifically to East Side Tiff District area. So that's kind of in our thinking right now here of taking that next step to still a targeted concept study, because right now, the old studies here listed six to eight items, and I've probably listed three now. But also, old studies, the levee wall wasn't built back in those old studies. I think this project, in my eyes, is maybe a little more long-range than Arlington Countryside, just how I see it, but that doesn't mean it is. That's just my gut feeling. But I think a next step study would be a benefit that would look at those main issues, pumping, possible storm sewer, possible detention in open areas. I don't honestly have a number for those. I think it's probably, you know, that since there's options, you're probably still talking a million to two million dollars. I mean, I didn't try to look at the cost as much as I did as the other one, because of the options. And the reality, it's hard to throw out a swag when you're that early and don't even know what you're swagging at, I guess.
But Steve, I'll also point out, that's fairly consistent with what the Christopher Burke study evaluation had for the east side zones.
And then if the city elected to move forward with a targeted study for that area, it would be a great benefit if by chance, Mount Prospect would provide the detailed modeling that an engineer they hired to do, to whoever did the modeling, because that would help cut down on a time, which I believe they'd be able to provide, because I believe that when an owner purchases a project, they are entitled to the rights of that project. But, so, looking at that, we kind of looked at our office, what we thought it would take to do a targeted study of this area. Without the model, without the digital model, which is the cut and dried disc, I'll call it, the, you know, it's, but it'd probably be a forty thousand dollar study, because there's a lot of recreating. If the city was able to get the model, and if we were engaged, able to handle to do it, and we could use the model, it's probably a twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar study. So that's kind of where we're at with the east side. I think there could be benefits. We're even looking, outside of the study, we met Joe, Mark and I met with Mount Prospect, I think about two thousand and twenty. We're even looking, outside of the study, we met Joe, Mark and I met with Mount Prospect, I think about two months ago, about the Christopher Burke report that I already mentioned in two thousand fifteen that was done, and we talked about some improvements that maybe could be done. So I think there are some viable options that can be done here, and I honestly think now is a good time to look at them and get them programmed, so if, when money becomes available, they can be further looked at and designed fully.
Questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Couple, couple of quick ones. Obviously, the pumping has got to be done regardless of what you do, that's a factor. If you were to do all three phases, you would need the pumping anyway. So when you do this study, are you gonna look and say, in this area, whatever geographical boundary you draw, that we have to remove so many, whatever term you use for volume of water is what you're looking to try and eliminate? Do you then take each one of those three things and say, if we add pumping, we can move, you know, a third of that water just by pumping? The detention buys us another half of the total, and enlarging the storm sewer gets a little bit more, so you're able to say which you should go forward with first?
Yeah, it would detail the relative percentages of how much each one would affect it. And we would look at different storm events. I don't think we'd look at as many as I described Arlington Countryside. We'd probably look at two or three, maybe the ten, the fifty, and the hundred-year storm instead of five. But yeah, we'd look at different events. You know, the hundred-year storm event is a lot of water, and it gets a lot of expensive to fix that.
Right.
But that's why we would look at the different levels.
I think, too, what's missed is just by keeping these areas drier, because you're draining them quicker, they can survive another, a lot of times our hundred-year event might be over a period of time and not just all at once.
Right.
So, you know, if you're able to drain that water quicker, you can survive the next event that happens four days later.
Right.
The other question is, they're gonna be rebuilding on the East Side with those units that were burned. How do you handle, because those were three of, I don't know how many units are in there, fifteen?
Sixteen buildings.
How many?
Sixteen buildings.
Sixteen buildings? So it's, you know, it's a fifth of the total. What do you do about, you've mentioned that they weren't built the way they would be if they were built today? What, maybe this is more for data.
They're gonna, well, they're gonna be built, for simple terms, higher. Right now, in theory, water could enter possibly the garden basements and, garden basement, garden apartments or condos at a different, at an elevation that today wouldn't be allowed.
That protects the unit, but what do you do, you would also require detention.
Yeah, that won't be required because this is a rebuild. What's required by the federal and state codes in our code is the buildings need to be protected themselves.
Okay.
The site doesn't need to be re-engineered. So there are two facets. There's building protection and site. Here, what they would have done, if it was all built today, they'd protect the site better and the buildings. But now, what's gonna be required is the building protection.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Dan, anything? Okay.
Don, you had it right on that, Steve, thank you.
Is the study for the East Side gonna be cost by the similar, similar costs as the, as the other study that you're talking about?
If, depending, if we're, if the city is fortunate enough to get the digital model from Mount Prospect that was done of the study, that would keep the cost down relatively the same, about twenty thousand to twenty-five. If we weren't able to, or the city was not able to acquire that study, it would cost probably forty thousand because that study's gotta be recreated engineering-wise. But I think the city could be successful in obtaining that study.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Steve, thank you. Yes, sir.
If I'm understanding this correctly, what this will do is this will empty all of those parking lots and detention areas that are existing now and dry them out?
It will definitely help that. Yeah.
Very convincing.
It might definitely help with that.
No, I said it will definitely help. I did not say it would solidify for all range.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's next, Joe?
Our next item is discussion, or topic of Piper Property Sale Proceeds Discussion. And that was also a request from council.
Anyone on council that requested it?
I did.
Thank you. You're up.
I, as I looked at our financial situation, and we're talking here again about major capital projects coming forth in this one area only, and I'm sure there will be more. And as I recall in our budget hearings for this fiscal year, one of the things we were concerned with at that time was the establishment of a, I guess it's called a reserve fund. I don't know if that's the right term or not, for the general fund. And I thought that this would be an opportunity with this sale for us to move forward with increasing and having a viable reserve fund in the general fund, and then for whatever balance we have, then allocating the proceeds or balance of the proceeds to the capital, capital fund. For purposes of numbers, I'm suggesting that perhaps we look at allocating five hundred thousand dollars to the reserve general fund and the balance of the proceeds of the sale going to the capital fund.
Yes, sir.
Larry, I know you and I have talked about that, and, you know, money's going to the reserves, but I've talked to others, and I find that, you know, we're at a twenty-five percent reserve level now. Even in the worst of times that we've experienced as a city, we have never depleted our reserves to a point where we were in dire straits. Because before you go and you dive into your reserves, that's when you start making budget cuts and tightening the belt so that you don't have to delve into those too far. Before I could say, yeah, let's allocate money to the reserves, number one, I would do it as a percentage, not as a base number, because your budget is gonna fluctuate up and down year to year, and chances are it's gonna go up. So if you're gonna develop a resolution that creates a new minimum reserve amount, it should be a percentage so that we're dedicated to maintaining that year to year.
In response, I would be open to the concept. I really put the numbers for-
Sure.
-to start the discussion.
Oh, no, no, I get it. I just wanted to respond to it.
Yeah.
As far, you know, having heard Steve's presentation, you know, I think that it's opportune, and it would be a better idea to dedicate those funds to that drainage program and create something tangible. I think that the people of Prospect Heights deserve something tangible. They've dealt with this arena property for many years, and, you know, it's time to have something that they can see, touch, and feel in their backyard, and when it rains, they're not flooding, and that impacts everybody. You know, I'm not opposed to what you're proposing at all, but my gut tells me we should go and put this directly into that capital improvement program and use it, and, you know, like I said, let it be.
Well, maybe I used the wrong term, but I was talking about the capital improvement budget or whatever we, the fund.
Right, I meant rather than split it up and say, hey, we take five hundred thousand and put it into a reserve budget or the general fund reserve versus the capital reserves. Were you, were you putting everything in capital reserves?
No, I, I, I had the feeling, at least as I recall our budget discussions, was that we needed some money in the operating reserve fund, so we're not always tapping the capital reserve fund. At least that was in the budget discussions. If I'm incorrect on that, then I would go along with you in saying, put it all into the capital reserve, capital. What's the official name of the fund?
Capital Improvement.
Capital Improvement Fund, okay.
See, I like, I like to call the first part of that scaredy pat, only because Pat is uber-conservative. And we were talking today, and I had mentioned, you know, when have we ever really depleted the reserves? I mean, if you go back to, back to two thousand six, two thousand seven, how far into those reserves did we ever get? I don't know personally, but, you know, we certainly never depleted them all.
We didn't, but like you had said, two thousand seven, that number was probably twenty-five percent of a seven or eight million dollar budget, not a twelve million dollar budget. So as our budget has increased, yeah, we keep it twenty-five percent, and logic would say, well, as long as you're maintaining that twenty-five percent balance, you should be okay, but it just, to me, like you said, scaredy pat, you're right.
No, I get it, and it's just something, you've seen it before, somebody has it.
Right, no, I mean, I was here in the days when, you know, we didn't know if we were gonna eat our left arm or right arm. You know, I mean, that's how bad it was. And, you know, I don't remember exactly if we ever did go into the reserves, but I do know that we went into what I would call float, you know, and that being the decision to, as our old policy used to be, that Mike Ducharme took us away from, don't do any program, don't do any purchases for public works, or don't do any capital programs until we know how we are in January or February of the year, so that we know if we're gonna go over budget or not because we couldn't predict our revenues.
Right, but if you're going into, if you're in that situation, just like you said, you don't really know if you went into the reserves or not. It'd be interesting to find out if we did, Joe. If we didn't, what would make you go to the reserves later, and why would you have to have a greater reserve if you never touched it before? All it is, is just a bigger, it's still, it's still twenty-five percent of your operating budget. Whether it's seven million or twelve.
It is different now that we have a capital improvement program. We did not have that before. So we have a segregated, and actually, there's a firewall now, I think. I don't know if we, we actually physically separated that money account-wise from our, from our regular general fund balance. So it is a little different in that way, but, but I, I just think that, you know, by having a larger balance in our, in our reserve fund, just moves that canary a little bit further out of the coal mine, so we see it sooner when it comes. You know, when, if you wait till you get to twenty-five percent, till you start to have to go and make council decisions of, we're gonna go into our reserve, it's different than being at thirty percent and going into it. It's like you get that buying of time a little bit. I don't think the five hundred, well, actually, if you have a twelve million dollar budget, you're talking about six hundred thousand gets us to thirty percent reserve. I don't think that's gonna be enough to impact what we do drainage-wise or capital improvement-wise. And, and I think it would be beneficial if Joe could tell us about the Tiff increment because I think that is going to change how we see some of these programs going on now because we probably will have money before the closing to do these projects.
And before, sorry, Joe, before you get into the Tiff conversation, you know, it'd be interesting to know, because I don't know what dollars are sitting in that capital improvement fund currently that are earmarked for drainage. Because if, the projects that Steve had just mentioned are obviously the two top priority projects, and the two projects that will have the largest singular impact on the city. It will, it will touch neighborhoods, it will touch regions, not areas, you know. So, I think that it's important to key in on those. And you talked about, in rough numbers, what, two and a half million or three, three and a half million dollars? I mean, you've got a very, very good start, and you certainly can do the larger of the two projects to start. And then you can dedicate future resources, being monies that are already in the capital improvement fund, to get the second project done as well. And after that, I'm not gonna call anything small or insignificant or anything, because all these projects, you know, are significant, but they're much smaller dollars to do. And then you can start doing annual projects that, you know, are smaller in scope and don't cost as much money.
I also think there's a benefit for the public to see that we're putting money into reserves from the standpoint that we're recognizing that these aren't the good times right now. This is when we make the hay. So let's put it aside now because I promise you, we will be back to the time when we're deciding whether we should eat our left or right arm.
But even in those times, but even in those times-
In two thousand seven, and we used to say, well, how in the world did we have twenty-eight policemen and, you know, twelve public works guys? And I'm like, I don't remember how we could have had that. And we went where we had to cut police and decimate the public works department. We're gonna, it's gonna get back to that point. And to me, increasing our reserve is such a small effect on what we'll do capital improvement-wise, but such a huge effect on us being able to know sooner when we have to start to make those cuts.
Joe, do you know what the state minimum for budget reserves is?
Uh, there, there isn't one. There's the Government Finance Officers Association. I believe their recommendation is, they're not solid. And the reason being is some communities might have more volatility within their revenues. Us as a, as a non-home rule community with, with limited resources would, would probably fall under our best practices to suggest a higher reserve. Communities that have a multitude of revenue sources are recommended to have a lower reserve. So, they don't come out with a hard and fast twenty-five percent, or thirty percent, or ten percent or so.
Okay, well, as I said to Larry earlier, I'm not opposed to it. I just need to be convinced of why we need to do it. And it, I guess the best question to ask is, you as the singular person who runs this city, what do you feel the reserve should be?
Uh, let me come back here, because a big part of the reserves, too, is also sometimes you might float reserves a little bit higher so that you could undertake these types of programs. I mean, if, in the future, everything that Steve mentioned, and the other, the stack of programs behind this are generally all probably million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars. These are probably the biggest ones we can pick for, for a, an improvement, an impact to neighborhoods. But as we, if we get further along, since we don't, our situation, we don't have the ability to borrow for stormwater management the way other communities do. So if we're gonna start tackling some of these programs, we're gonna have to save a million here, a million five there, two million dollars. So there might be some flexibility in our reserves. What I would, maybe just to talk about our immediate situation, is, as you know, both the, the Palatine Tiff and the Milwaukee Avenue Tiff, those are coming due fairly closely. I don't have the specific dates, but I believe it's within a year or two. They've only recently started to generate Tiff increment, which is coming back to that. Now, as you will recall, I think the number that the auditors are carrying is a four-point-two million dollars for what the city purchased that property for and things like that. So, in discussion with Mike Ducharme, Sherry Grayfin, our staff recommendation is there's a mechanical issue. First of all, from, from the proceeds of the sale of the property, plus what the Tiff balances are, that we pay ourselves back first for what we purchased that. And that's, as I understand, that's an allowable Tiff expense. That's something that we've done. Now, there's mechanics to do that, there's probably a number of resolutions. But our key factor is we don't wanna leave an account balance in the Tiff. If we didn't have this loan, then I'd be, I would be suggesting that we do this, this stormwater improvement or streets improvement within that so that we, we essentially don't leave a balance. Because we've bought property, we've done a loan from ourselves, our first obligation is to pay ourselves. So, that's, that's a kind of an accounting and mechanical issue. We do that, now, once we pay ourselves, that goes to the general fund. Now, from the general fund, to further our discussion from tonight, if you want to make sure that we have money at least to do Arlington Countryside, or possibly to get a start on the East Side, or maybe with the Tiff balance, I don't know. I'll ask Mike Ducharme to do analysis of that. But then we do a resolution, a transfer resolution, as we've done with, with other money. Recently, we did that, I think with money that was in the solid waste fund. We transferred that to capital because we know some of our largest, uh, street damaging situations comes, comes from the heavy trucks that come down there. There's, there's a logical connection to that. So my recommendation is, first of all, we pay the general fund off from the Tiff balance and the proceeds of this. Then from that general fund, we can come back, and I would recommend, we can do that this year because I, my sense from the council is we, we wanna get started on some of these stormwater improvements, the sooner the better. Within this year, and we only have six meetings left, we come back to you with a resolution, resolution of the council committing that money to, we can, and we could be specific to these two, or I mean however specific, level of specificity that you'd like to achieve, but.
Now, the money that you had just referenced for paying back the general fund, that being paid back in this fiscal year- that being paid back in this fiscal year would generate a surplus to the budget, correct?
Well, I don't know, I don't know if I'd wanna call it that, because first of all, we're paying a, a debt to ourselves.
But it's a debt to ourselves, we've been carrying on the books for what, fifteen, fourteen, fifteen years?
Right.
So.
A, a, auditors have specifics.
No, no, I get it, I get it. But that, that money could just as easily, and it's what, six hundred thousand and some change?
I believe so.
That money could be, could be earmarked, once the, the debt is satisfied, could be directed into that reserve fund, correct?
Right.
So, I mean, we could satisfy that most immediately.
Right.
Um, the, the proceeds from the land sale, I mean, certainly aren't gonna be seen for what, eighteen months?
Probably, yeah.
And at that point, you can draw up a resolution to say, hey, you know, let's start up these projects, unless, Steve, you feel like these projects are gonna go out of control in the next eighteen months. I mean, it's, it's PVC, isn't it?
Yeah, no, I wouldn't.
It's not like the cost of plastic.
I, I think we'll be on a parallel track. You're right, there's, first of all, there's engineering work to be done. Before we get where we need to spend one-point-five million dollars, and, and basically, we're gonna have three, three sources of revenue coming, coming in for this. The one is the sale, the sale proceeds. The other is the existing balances of, of what are in the TIFs. And then there's what we expect, um, a continual, a property tax payments, the increment coming in. So, and, uh, initially, the other day, when I spoke with Mike, he thought we might come fairly close to the, to the four million dollars, so. Which would cover the accounting issue, and you are correct, Scott. It's, it's fifteen years ago, but nevertheless, it's a record of, of, of repaying a debt to ourselves. Once that debt is repaid to ourselves, then we, we can disperse that from the general fund to, uh, capital improvements.
Okay, but we, we'd like, I, I guess what my point was, we don't have that money currently earmarked as a debt, or, or a, a debt to be incurred. I mean, once we satisfy that debt, it's off of our books, and at the end of this fiscal year, there's an additional six hundred thousand dollars that we really didn't think was going to be there, but it did come in.
Right.
Because it's been carried over for fifteen years.
Right.
So, at the end of it, and we have this six hundred thousand dollars that was never spent, well, that satisfies the increase to, say, thirty percent. Now, keep in mind that we're going to, with, with an ever-increasing budget, we're going to have to maintain that thirty percent. It's just not this one-time infusion of six hundred thousand.
Right, right.
As our budget increases to thirteen million, you need to increase that, that percentage of commitment.
Yep.
That's right.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I, I agree with what you're saying, but the infusion of the six hundred thousand puts us to the thirty.
Today.
Our budget doesn't, if our budget doesn't increase, we are already funded. If we have the same size budget, there's no increase to the amount that has to be set aside for the reserve, it's fixed. A couple of things, though, just to maybe clarify with Joe's, what I think Joe said. As that money comes in from the increment, we can write checks internally, just to use the term, to pay down that loan. So, let's say it is six hundred thousand, like you said. It's not necessarily that it's, it's, that it's a, um, surplus this year. It's a receipt of six hundred thousand dollars through TIF increment that we are then on our balance sheet gonna reduce our debt to ourself on, that then gets deposited into the general fund, which I don't think triggers that we have a surplus. It's just additional money in the fund, or surplus money in the fund, that we then would transfer to.
It would be a balance sheet item.
It's ba- it's all a balance sheet.
It's a balance sheet item.
So, I, I think that this all can be done through a couple of resolutions to say, first, all future TIF money that still comes in on these TIFs will be used to first pay down debt. And then, once that debt is paid down and transferred to the general fund immediately, it will be transferred to the capital improvement program. Same thing, upon closing of the Piper Lane property, that money will be used to pay down debt, deposited into the general fund, and upon that deposit will be transferred to the.
Right, I, I'm looking at the perfect world. How do we create the perfect world? Well, the perfect world is not only do we increase that general fund budget, or, uh, the reserves, uh, budget, like you're asking for, but we also have enough dollars to care, to take care of both, uh, those flooding projects. And then, you know, really, I hate to divide it, but then there is no east side, west side. We're just taking care of drainage problems throughout the city, and you don't have that debt. And, you know, when times are good and you have, you have some money, Pat, I know you like to save it, but you also gotta take a vacation, and these drainage projects are the vacation.
Either that we wait till we close on the property. I think this year, we did a, a bumper crop of ropes. I think we're at one-point-seven million.
Mm-hmm, we are, this has been a, a big year.
We always said we had to do a million a year. So, we really went beyond in order to get some economy of scales of doing areas together and save some money on the per linear foot of road to do areas together, that we next year, in our, in our budget, can say, this is, this is a drainage year, this is a, a.
Well, this is gonna be, this is, this is gonna be a huge drainage improvement. Because not only are you talking about doing east side over by, uh, you know, the apartment complexes and everything, and you're doing Arlington Countryside, but you're also potentially doing, uh, that Willa Road project. I mean, you're gonna have darn near ten million dollars' worth of drainage projects coming up.
Right, but we, we can only take it one bite at a time. The first bite is getting the two studies done, once we know we can get that digital information, issuing the contracts to Gwolp to do the studies, and then moving forward with Arlington Countryside design drawings, which we all, we have the money for now. I mean, it's in the budget now, we have the capital budget there to do this. We also have the money to probably do the Arlington Countryside in our budget, if next year we decide it's a drainage year.
Right, and this is what I love, is that, but we've talked about this, we've talked about this for eight years. Okay, we've talked, and it was talked about before our time. And now, it's going from talking to actually doing something. Now, we're talking, and there's money behind it, and we could actually get something moving. So, it, it's exciting, it's very exciting, I mean. What's up?
My recognition, I guess I am. Uh, I would like to see, since I initiated this conversation, I, I was not aware of the TIF situation, and I think that's a nice, smooth way of handling something, and then moving to the proceeds of the sale going to the capital improvement fund. What I would like to see then, as a result of this discussion we've had, a resolution adopted, uh, first of all, composed and, and eventually adopted, that puts this on the record.
Right, well, would, I guess, Kevin, would that be two resolutions?
Whatever the number is.
One saying that the proceeds from the TIF funds at the end of the fiscal year would be held over to, or, or, uh, transferred to the reserve fund to create a thirty percent? Or do we need to have a new resolution drawn up, just saying that we require a thirty percent reserve?
I think you'd wanna new, you'd wanna bifurcate that. You'd wanna a new resolution, if you're, if you're gonna set a standard for the reserves moving forward, you'd have a resolution indicating what that new standard is. You have a separate resolution indicating where the TIF funds are, how the TIF funds are gonna be used and dispersed, and then a thorough resolution, when the sale is completed, indicating how those sale proceeds will be used and dispersed. Because the sale won't be completed, if it's completed in, for eighteen months, we don't really have to worry about that one right now. But we can certainly, uh, draft the, the first two that I mentioned.
The fir- the first two, I, I mean, I think are important to get going now.
I would like to see all three of them.
I, I think the third one, before we can do it, we need to find out what is in the, the drainage fund now. Maybe not.
Well, the third one deals with the proceeds.
Yeah, the third one is dealing with the proceeds.
Well, either the proceeds of the sale.
So, we would, we would then dedicate all the proceeds of the sale to the capital reserve fund?
No, first, they'd be dedicated to paying the debt, moved into the general fund, and then moved to.
We were doing that.
It would structurally be the similar to the TIF, to the TIF.
Right, it would be the same, just changing the TIF.
Changing the, changing the source of the proceeds.
Right. Like, Kevin, is there anything you need to do? Is there anything you need to do to make sure? I know the TIF ends at a certain time, but I know that, just like everything government-related, there are predecessors to the ending date that we have to do things by. Are there any thirty-day, sixty-day, ninety-day, you know, one-hundred-and-eighty-day requirements that you can't do this kind of thing or that kind of thing before a TIF expires? You know, I think we need almost like an opinion letter of that, what, what we can do, uh, prior to this TIF ending.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the underlying TIF documents, but I, I can certainly provide that. I mean, there's, there are restrictions on the use of funds, as Joe alluded to. One of those uses is repaying a debt to yourself. But I, we can, we can prepare something that will analyze the winding up of the TIF districts. We did something similar, I think, last year as well, or two years ago, uh, for another TIF. So, we can certainly put something together. There are sort of steps that are required for winding up a TIF.
And I think another issue to examine would be porting money, because the, uh, technically, the, uh, the property, the Piper Lane property is in the, the Palatine TIF, but there's, the, the, the larger source of funding is coming from the Milwaukee TIF. But they are contiguous, so it's my understanding that what's allowable is porting, but there might be procedures for that.
Can any of those TIF dollars be used for drainage?
Oh, yes, they could be, as, as a public improvement.
Yeah, if it's, if it's in the geographic area that the TIF covers, you can, you can use it for a public improvement.
The, Steve, I guess the question's for you, is any of the area that we're talking about for the drainage over on, the east, uh, the eastern side, is that within the TIF area?
The only thing, Scott, I know, I know what you're asking, but the only thing is that complicates it. It's much cleaner to move it.
No, 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 you, well, first, you're paying yourself back, I get that. And then, secondly, you can use those funds to pay for engineering to start the project. And then, of course, you use the.
Use it for anything, once you pay yourself back.
To pay ourselves back, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would suggest you just, you earmark it for repayment of debt, and then go into the capital improvement fund, or, or whatever. You don't need to designate the specific project that you want.
So, there could be repayment to us, even if we do that now, there could be further repayment, because there's gonna be two TIF payments left, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so this first one is a repayment of the debt that we have to ourselves now.
It all will be. All future TIF payments will be a repayment to ourself.
Oh, they will?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I, I missed that.
And then it's, and then it moves from the general fund into the capital improvement fund, or whatever, whatever fund you'd wanna designate, but it sounds like we have an improvement fund, so that's how that mechanism would work.
Do we have, do we need to wait till, um, we repay ourselves before we can do the studies? I mean, don't we have enough, and, and we don't?
No, we could.
No.
Am I not budgeted to do that?
We, I mean, uh, technically, if, if you wanted to get the studies underway, we, within the capital improvement plan, we certainly have enough for a, a twenty thousand dollars or forty-five thousand, I mean, however it works out, to do one or, and/or both of these studies. That would just be, we, we'd come back, um, with, with a resolution authorizing that expenditure. It's certainly over the, the administrator's amount, but, um, the, the, the studies we could do even absent, uh, what we're talking, discussing about proceeds and.
Which I think we should get the proposals in contract form to be able to act on them at the next meeting.
Ready to press the button, yeah.
Yes.
I'll go to you then, I would, regarding a direction from the council to.
Yeah, so it sounds like the direction from the council is, well, on my end, I will review the requirements for winding up those TIFs and make sure that we have a, a timeframe that we, if we need to follow, we'll be following it appropriately. Uh, and that will also affect drafting the resolutions that were discussed. And then, it, it sounds like the council's also directing, uh, the city engineer to just prepare those proposals, and then we can put them in resolution form for the next meeting and approve them, if there's a budget and payment's not an issue.
And, and, you know, there's concern about money that has been earmarked for the expenditures, capital improvements plans this year or so forth. I think, uh, my recollection is, we, we, through the scale economies, our road program's about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars under budget. Now, but as we go through, there might be more concrete work, some change orders and so forth, that's gonna subtract from that. But I, I think even from that source, we'd have money at least to get the, the, uh, the first study going.
Okay, and then, were you also gonna draw up a resolution directing the fund, the proceeds to go into the capital improvement fund?
Yeah, they would, the sale proceeds, yeah. I'll do all, I'll do all three resolutions.
Okay, and then, my last question is, how do you protect those capital improvement funds to ensure that they're gonna be used for capital improvement projects and not robbing Peter to pay Paul?
Are you turning, like, from an internal control perspective, or are you looking for some ordinance or resolution that would? I mean, if, if there are.
You have a road fund, you have a drainage fund, you have this fund or that fund. You know, I don't wanna see all the money come out of the drainage fund and then go into the road fund, or vice versa. Or, you know, I don't want, yeah. Yeah, I, I just don't want monies to be able to just be pulled out of the capital improvement fund and used for.
Non-capital improvement?
Right, correct.
Well, I think if, that would require council action, right, Joe?
It would.
If, if it's designated by the council for a specific purpose, it can only be moved out of that fund by council action.
Currently?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
And I really don't think there's anything that could bind, uh, future councils. And, and that, I think that's a, an issue of, uh, of the, the future, the, you, you hope that council acts with certain prudence and not raid that, that money, or, but I think the.
Right, just like they could change, a new council could come in and say, we don't think a thirty percent reserve fund level is necessary, we're gonna reduce it to twenty percent.
This council will never change.
I know, but I'm just.
This is forever.
Oh, this is forever, all right, well. But, I mean, any, any legal action that you can take can be undone by, um, by another council.
What it would require, though, is somebody to consciously put a resolution or this, whatever it would be, for removing money that was previously designated for.
Or rescind that prior resolution.
Correct, so there would have to be action taken to say, we're not going to take care of the drainage, or we're not gonna do roads.
All right, we have our direction, councillor, you're good?
I am, Mayor.
Okay, uh, we had, uh, a patrol here from, uh, Treasure Tibbetts, but he has disappeared. Are you still here? There you are. I saw you out here.
I don't wanna remind this discussion, to be fair.
Go ahead.
The only thing I wanted to say is, I think, I believe the GFOWA recommends at least four months of reserves, uh, minimum. And that's their, that would be thirty-three percent, I guess, is what you're talking about with thirty percent reserves, or more. I mean, they could, it could be like four to s- eight months, or something like that. So, but, and I, and the other comment I wanted to make is, when Pat was talking about, uh, the old-school history of the city, when, when I came on board in oh-three, I don't believe the city had much of anything in the way of reserves.
Right.
You know, I mean, there, it really was honest, well, robbing Peter to pay Paul. And it continued on all the way through to City Hall Fire, if you recall, was the spring of oh-six. So, that really, that not, that, of course, triggered some extraordinary expenses that we weren't expecting. And, uh, you know, we, we didn't really get back on the right track of accumulating reserves probably until, uh, oh-nine, ten, somewhere in there. You know, and then was ratcheting up, I don't remember the exact numbers, but it was something like that. So, these, these are good times right now, I mean, extraordinarily good times for the city relative to the last fifteen years.
These are high-class problems.
They were hard times, to coin a phrase, right?
The, uh, the insurance settlement, there was.
That helped.
It was in eleven.
That's true. It took a while to get that all, kind of.
Right, all right, thank you.
That's all I wanted to say.
All right, Joe?
Any other items about the proceeds? Okay, the next item is, uh, Safe Routes to School Sidewalk, uh, grant discussion. And I believe as Alderman, Alderman Williamson asked about this, this followed a, something that the mayor circulated, I believe you got from Metropolitan Mayor's Northwest Conference. And it was an announcement of a call for, uh, grant applications. One of the things that we find out, though, is, this happens, um, too often, in my opinion. Uh, you, there'll be a fir- initial notice that goes out to the elected officials that kinda advertises free money for programs. I think there's a cap of about two-hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and then about three weeks later, what they don't send out to the elected officials, but they send out to staff, is a list of about ten or fifteen restrictions. Uh, that, you know, i- if you meet this, you're qualified, if you don't have this, you are unqualified. So, we are wrestling with that. But at least in the interest of getting an application going, because time is short, we picked a project that would be about that grant limit, and there's roughly, it's about an eighty-twenty grant, city would have. City would have to pay engineering costs. I think we picked a project that we anticipate maybe about two hundred and forty thousand dollars, roughly. What we are recommending is a continuation of our sidewalk efforts on Schoenbeck. This is up in the area, the park area. It also follows a, a area that the police are aware of, that they've examined, I think, from, of traffic of pedestrian safety. And I think, Chief, that there's been a history of, of problems there, I believe, or so.
For several years, we've been getting complaints about the crosswalk near Schoenbeck and Stonegate. And getting kids safely across the street from Country Gardens over to the sidewalk that connects directly with the, with the District Twenty-three campus. And we did a, recently did a traffic study there and showed that there was significant speeding going on on Schoenbeck. And ideally, what this would do would be establish a sidewalk from roughly Glum Brook to Stonegate and then would improve the crosswalk at Stonegate.
And I also, just for clarification, to people wondering why, that sure seems like a short area for that amount of money. The, the challenge that Prospect Heights have is that when we do a sidewalk, because of the, the drainage ditches swales, so to take care of that, to provide a level surface, there's additional storm sewer work, and that adds to the cost. But, any rate, that's, that's the project that, following this grant, that we recommend. And we, we also recommend applying for it. This is, at this rate, it's roughly about an eighty-twenty rate. That's really the only way that the city can afford to do sidewalk projects, if, if we can leverage another grant source, so.
Makes sense.
Just, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, please.
Two comments, I was looking at Google Earth today, looking at exactly where this would go. And I think when you say between Stonegate and, is it Glum Brook?
Lumber.
Lumber. Between those two, you're talking about doing it on the east side of the road, not the west side. Which I, wherever it goes, it's an improvement. My only thing is, is what, what the, what Joe was talking about with the improvements of the swales, if we do it on the other side, I don't know if we have jurisdiction on that side of the road to put a sidewalk in. If we do it on the west side, there, I, I don't believe there's any open ditches there. It's all covered already, so it's, we'd be able to go all the way across the calm atisement. And the reason why I think that's significant is, if we're trying to get the kids from north to south, if you live in Cherry Creek, you're going to cross the road twice to get to the intersection of you, of Schoenbeck and Palatine. If you put it on the, if you put it on the west side, and you're in Cherry Creek, you can go all the way to Palatine without crossing the road. And the kids that live in Country Gardens, already, no matter where you put it, have to cross the road to get to that sidewalk. So, you've got a certain segment that will cross it twice, that wouldn't have to cross it at all. And then a certain segment that already crosses it, that would still cross it if it was on the other side. I'm just throwing that out there. Second thing is, I'm, I'm not a huge fan of those, of those crosswalks. They have one at Hershey, and I know we worked hard to get it. But I, I've seen a few times, and I think it's mostly because of the color of the light, we have no, no jurisdiction over that, where people see it as just a warning. You know, they don't really see it as a stop. And Mount Prospect had their issue with that. And I don't know where that stands. I thought there was some kind of hold on using those for a period of time. I dot did. Is that over?
Yes, I believe it's over, but that doesn't mean it's going to come back. Those pedestrian beacons have had a fifteen-year up-and-down program. Many changes, many on-holds. The federal, federal highways never really approved them. They've always done an interim approval, different agencies have bounced back and forth. They have seen their challenges.
Because people see a flashing and they think they could just walk.
I mean, there's a variety of studies. If you ask me my personal opinion, I would say I believe, in general, they do help. But, like any study, you can always find the other side of the issue.
And also, to, to address the west side thought, we looked at that. And one of the problems on the west side is that, and this might be why the sidewalk doesn't continue there, because it, it stops there abruptly, but there's a utility pole issue. And Steve, you might know better than I, but it used to be roughly, I think, the, the estimate for relocating or, or, I should say, not relocating, but burying utility lines is about thirty thousand dollars a pole.
Yeah.
So...
And not only utility pole, there's limited right-of-way, right to that thousand feet.
I was just bringing it up.
And there's all of that steep grade, so there's challenges.
Yeah.
I'm fine with it on either side, it just seems more logical to be west, but if there's restrictions, that's fine.
I mean, the study would always look at either both sides, but my gut strongly says that that section would have to be on the east side.
Okay.
We, we did look at it.
Okay.
Anyone else moving on?
Is there any desire for a discussion of the other three items tonight, or?
No.
Okay. Well, that's fine, we've covered a lot of ground tonight. Which brings us to consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
And the consent agenda is mostly purchases. Do we have any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Or requests for removal of any items?
Right.
If not, we can go ahead with the vote.
I'd like to remove E if we could, and I'm, I'm good with A through D, as is.
E is elephant, and we take that one out, okay? Let's get approval on the others.
Sure, and if we could get a roll call vote on the, these, Adam Court?
I make a motion, we approve consent agenda items A through D as submitted.
Second, please.
Second.
Second. No further discussion, roll call.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Ludvixson?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Messer?
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero, moving back to item E, R eighteen. Dash twenty-nine. Alderman Ludvixson?
Open up discussion and make a motion, we approve item E.
Second.
Why'd you take it off?
To open discussion.
For discussion.
All right, thank you. We have a first, we have a second. No further objections, we'll have a roll call.
No, I took it off to have discussion.
We are talking.
That's why we... You have to...
Go ahead, we, we got it, we got it. We, we got it, it's open discussion here on the air.
All right, my, 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 my issue with this is, and I don't know, the, the revision we got wasn't a red line revision, it was just revisions to the actual resolution. And there were a couple of things in there that kept coming up that I just wanted to bring up, that I had concerns with. And, and one of them, the first item is that Section Four talks about that, that they can assign additional staff or officials to this committee. I think that this goes, I'm not sure that I like that, because it, we already say that the committee can't expend money. And to me, adding staff and requiring staff to do things is no different than, than spending money. We have very limited time with our staff. Peter attends far too many meetings already. I think that's a topic that we should put on a future discussion, is what Peter should be attending. So, I, I had a problem with that. The other thing is, the term initiative is used in this, and I don't know if that existed in the original resolution, but when I agreed to put this forward, with having Taniglia come forward and start to do some concept plans, in the meeting we discussed this, and it was agreed that that's what we were doing, was that we were creating a layout so that if somebody came to us and said, I want to do a development in Prospect Heights, or I want to build this here, that we kind of had a rough sketch of saying, here's what the council says is acceptable, here's what we see as a plan that would work. My fear is, my, the committee is fine with me to deal with what it talks about dealing with, and that being a liaison between the public and the city. My, my fear is, by keep calling, by keep promising an initiative, it sounds like something, a charge that we have to get done. And I don't want that to be the case, because I don't see it as that. I don't see it as something that we are doing this downtown development as a project that we have on our plate with a timeline that says we're going to do this. I think that the development is if somebody comes to us and wants to do something, like we have with Deli-FU right now, that it, that it fits our mold, that they're going to do what they want to do to build their location, and it's what we have talked about and said, looks fine, looks good, move forward. So, I guess my question is to the mayor, is there, with this committee, is there, do you envision, or do you think, or is there any plan to have city involvement financially with any of the projects that might come out of this initiative?
Well, that's why I took a different turn. Typically, if you read, I send out releases from other cities all the time. Nobody ever calls me back and says, boy, that was a good idea from Mount Prospect to go ahead and buy the huge vacant land, and then say they're going to go look for a developer. That's the normal process. So, I realized that nobody's going to support that here. So, I said, well, why don't we let the people do their own process of coming in and saying, we'd like to have this, we'd like to have that, which happened. And I said, well, if that's the case, then go out and buy the building store, the other one, based on a meeting with Dan Peterson, and what you have in mind will be reviewed, and we'll, we'll go from there. Is my vision to spend money, I, I think eventually, if you want to develop redevelopment, you're going to have to spend money. But at this point, this council, this committee or ad hoc committee, has no power to spend any money.
Correct, no, I, I agree with that, but I just wanted to know what, when they use the term initiative, what you thought that was. And, I mean, what, what kind of money, when you say that the city will have to spend money, what do you envision?
Well...
Not, not dollar amount, but type of money being spent by the city.
Right, I, I think, you know, it has to feed on its own first. The ball has to get rolling down a hill before we can build a snowman. And I can't answer that question. Let's, let's see where this goes. And I just would like some support and some citizens that have lived, or some of the people have lived there for fifty years, that I've placed, would like the place on the committee, to get ideas, to get concept plans, and people that have been successful. And meet with other people that haven't developed anything in town, and to get a good feel for what they can do or we would like them to do. For example, we don't have a restaurant in our city. You've got to go eat in Arlington Heights, or Mount Prospect, or Wheeling. We've been searching diligently for that. Dan and I have met with several people, and we may have someone. But we wouldn't finance anything or spend any money for them to go ahead with a plan that they would like to do, and we could help them with planning and zoning issues. But eventually, I think if we're going to make something out of this, we may have to buy something. That's the way developers work. You put out an RFP, say, hey, we own X number of acres, we'd like to see X number of townhomes, let's say, running from Shell to Maravah, and what, what is it you're going to need? Maybe it's a sales tax sharing program, which we've used in the past. Maybe, maybe that'll work. Right now, we have nothing, but we do have a start of something.
I like the Deli-FU concept, they've come to us and asked for nothing. We've offered them nothing, they're doing this completely on their own.
Right.
We haven't offered them a sales tax rebate, we haven't offered them money to help build. All we can offer them is zoning relief and any kind of zoning relief they need to make their project work. So, I like that, I'm, I'm on board with that.
That's where we're at.
I don't want to have another arena, I don't want to be in, when I'm sixty-five or seventy, seeing Prospect Heights disassemble another, you know, section of property that they bought up because they thought, we thought that it would be a good place to develop land and, or develop a project. I think Deli-FU is a perfect example, they came to us, they want to move there. We told them what they can do, they didn't ask for anything, we can give them anything, they're doing it. So, that's, that's the right way.
Right, that's, that's certainly the start of process, you know, the project. And I think it'll, it'll feed on itself. And especially if we have our soldiers, that I call soldiers, out in the field saying good things about, hey, look what's happening right where you have X number of cars going by, new store, I don't know, Dunkin' Donuts or whatever. I believe the post office is going to go away one day. There'll be land that we can look at then. Because eventually, the strip shopping center that, coincidentally, we owned it in years ago, we were planning to knock it down then. If we can get new stuff going where people can move over, or move into, or own, then we can go to the next step. To me, the next step would be the Deli-FU strip shopping center, as far as the future development goes. So, right now, we're not spending any money, there's no plan to spend any money. Right now, we're trying to interest people to invest their money into, in this case, the contracts that are being negotiated are being handled by the lawyers of the people that want to buy. Deli-FU, for example. They have their own attorney, they're working on a contract, they've already got two of them ready to go, two contracts. One, we can talk about some other time, but they're doing their own stuff. And that's, that's the way I want to head. I want support and enthusiasm and people that are in business here welcoming and answering straight-up questions. How is it? Is it easy to run a business in Prospect Heights? Or do they hassle you like, I've heard heffys, for example, that the inspector comes in every other day and hassles them? I said, no, we have rules and regulations, and they could be, they're followed. So, anyway, hopefully I answered your question, I'm not going too long here.
Yes.
All right, motion to approve E.
Discussion, question, Mayor? Just a couple of observations. With my experience, having ten members on any kind of volunteer committee becomes very difficult and almost inefficient to handle. Seven members is basically an optimum, based upon my professional experience with having, handling volunteer committees. The second item is, I, I am pretty certain that this council was asked the question about whether or not they want to be in the real estate business. And I think it was answered uniformly by everybody that we do not want to be in the real estate business.
What's your point?
My point is that when we, my point is, you're, you're, in my opinion, your committee is a little too big, but that's up to you to decide.
All right, I appreciate that.
My second point is that we are already on record, as far as I know, and I could, I'm willing to be corrected on that, is that we've, as a council, have said, at least given an opinion, that we do not want to buy property.
Right, and I agree with you on that, that's why we're working the other way. That's why we're doing exactly what we're doing.
Okay, but there was discussion, I think I heard you talk about discussions, about we're eventually going to perhaps have to buy something. That should be a question that comes back to the council on a policy basis.
Obviously, it would come back to the council, thank you, though. Anything else?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
So, just for clarification, there was a request, I believe, from Alderman Ludvixson to remove the sec, sentence in Section Four regarding additional staff and officials may be added on an ad hoc basis at the discretion of the chairman and city administrator. Do we want to vote to approve the resolution as amended or as presented?
I would make a motion to make that, to amend it, what do you call that? How do you say that on its face, or?
Yeah, amended on its face.
Amended on its face to remove section, is that Section Four only deal with the hiring?
There's additional, it would remove that sentence from Section Four, so...
That would be my, my, before I make that motion, maybe if there's anybody else that has any other comments?
Well, make your motion, and if they have other motions, they can do it.
Could we do multiple base amendments?
So, no, I would, if you are going to make the, if you're going to amend that motion, or you're going to amend this resolution, motion to approve as amended.
Okay. Though the mo, the...
Because the motion...
The resolution is asking for the, a change from seven to ten.
Aye.
That's the resolution.
No, I don't think so.
That, that is the, that is, that is the change that is in this resolution. However, this resolution also reflects the fact that, the language that's in here was in the original resolution. So, if you want to change that, you can make that change now.
I, I listened, spoke, and heard Alderman Rosenthal, and I do believe that ten is excessive, and I think you'd get, you would be more efficient with seven. I look at the troubles that we have getting anything done here, and we only have six to work with, so...
I appreciate the comment, but I'm going to stick with ten, and I'll tell you why. There's a lot of people that are working at their stores at times and can't make the meeting. And I want as many people as possible to be out there saying good things about what we're trying to achieve here.
Mr. Mayor, the only problem with that is you changed the quorum requirement. Now, you have to have six people show up to have a quorum to hold the meeting, versus four.
Right.
So... There's no quorum, because there's no decision to be made.
You still have to have a quorum to have a meeting.
It's a public meeting.
Yeah, it has to comply with the open meeting.
I'm okay with that. I may not go to ten, we only have seven right now.
So the, the, I, I still, the question remains, do we want to amend this resolution to remove that sentence that was identified by Ted?
I guess what I, I would say to that, I, when I read this, like, when I started, I said it wasn't a red line, so I didn't know what was there before. And when I saw that Section four, I thought that was being amended from what it was before.
No.
Because it didn't seem like this was, is this the entire resolution yet?
This is the entire resolution.
Okay.
I have a question. So, this one sentence, I mean, for example, with the Strategic Directions Committee, um, you know, Dan Peterson comes and Joe comes, I mean, are we saying that they can't sit down in the meetings, or what are we saying? I mean, I'm not sure what you guys are taking out.
This is a public meeting, anybody can come.
Right, so, so we're not saying that they...
They're members of the committee.
So when we say additional staff and elected officials may be added, are we saying specifically to the committee itself?
Yes.
Okay, so, so, um, all right, well...
Yeah, this doesn't, if you remove that sentence, I want to preclude, um, them from attending the meeting?
Right.
This would be, this sentence says that they may be added to the committee.
As members of the committee.
Yeah, they would be added to the committee in an ad hoc basis.
So, so why would that be a problem? I'm, I'm not understanding why that's a problem.
Because, oh, I'll tell you why, because what if every committee we had said they wanted to be able to add staff to it, and said, "Well, we're going to require Joe to be here at every meeting." We have four or five committees, each one meets monthly, a couple of them meet quarterly. I mean, at some point, for the committees to start saying they want to have staff, you know, and require staff to be there, which this would do, it, it just gets to be burdensome, and that's...
But if, if it's going to be at the discretion of the city administrator, for example...
Adding the staff, not whether they show up, but adding the staff.
Right, adding the staff.
If the committee says, "We want Peter to be there at every meeting," or "We want Joe to be there at every meeting," that to me is adding staff, requiring them to be there.
But, but the committee's not adding the staff, it's the discretion of the city administrator, well, it says here, or the chairman, but, I mean, you could say, or it could just be up to the city administrator.
It doesn't say additional staff will be allowed to show up to meetings, it says additional staff may be added on an ad hoc basis at the discretion of the chairman and the city administrator. To me, it just sounds like the committee can dictate that they're requiring the attendance of staff. And to me, that's like an unfunded mandate, we're requiring staff to be there, and it's the same thing as spending money, in my opinion.
Well, if you take out, if you take out the chairman and just leave it up to the city administrator, it shouldn't be a problem.
Still the same thing.
I have no problem with that, but, uh, you know, if you don't give this group, this committee priority, we're talking about revamping the city. This is not, uh, you know, shoveling, uh, dirt or salt over, and, uh, whatever, some of the smaller committees. This is an important group. And, uh, change it any way you want. I, I don't need anybody there, it isn't required in my book, but, uh, why would you preclude that? Maybe you want to be there officially.
Well, I, I just think that if we keep, if our, all our committees have the ability to require staff to be there, it just gets to be...
I agree with you, and eliminate one of the other ones.
Well, and, and to be, uh, to be fair, the, this language, this format for the, um, for the resolution establishing these ad hoc committees is the language that we use for all those ad hoc committees. So part of the reason you may be having an issue is because this
They're all doing it.
power has been granted to all the committees. So, um, if you think it's coming to a breaking point, we can remove that language, and the mayor or the city administrator or the council can still direct staff to attend meetings, it just doesn't have to be included in the resolution.
Or, or you could put in the resolution that it would be with the consent of city council.
But then you, then you would be, um, requiring council action every time.
Ah, you don't want that, no?
Yeah. I think either the mayor or the city administrator, I, I think to solve these concerns, but still give the flexibility that's required, we just remove this language with the understanding that the mayor, the city administrator, city council can direct staff to attend meetings if it's necessary and they feel it's in the best interest.
Kevin, if this is something that's in all our committees already, can we, if we decide as a council to have this to be a workshop item in the future, and try to come up with a policy on how committees are staffed by staff, would that override the...
Yeah, the, the, the benefit of having this be an ad hoc committee versus a, a standard committee is, these are creatures of the council. They operate at the whims of the council, and the council can change how they operate.
And I would suggest that if it's the same for all of them, we leave it as is, but then we, we put this on a future workshop to talk about how much staff time, or what kind of attendance staff should have at these committee meetings. Because it's, it's becoming an issue, I mean, you can't turn on Channel seventeen and watch a committee meeting without Peter being there. I don't know, all the meetings are not...
That's another thing, I mean, you could also make sure that these are taped, and that staff can watch them on Monday morning, or, you know, whenever, just the same. And then we'll pine on it.
So, so no motion to amend?
No motion to amend unless somebody's amending the quality of...
Well, that, that would not be required. You would just, if you didn't want the ten, you would just vote down this resolution, because it's already been established with seven. This, the purpose of this resolution was to, to increase the number to ten.
Motion to approve, please.
We have one pending, so it's a vote.
Anything else, uh, roll call, please?
Alderman Rosenthal?
No.
Alderman Messer?
No.
Alderman Delick?
No.
What are you guys voting for? Do you have any idea?
Alderman Williamson?
No.
Alderman Ludvixson?
No.
I don't, I don't understand what you're talking about.
So, just for clarification, this committee still exists, it just exists in its prior form of seven.
With seven members of it.
Seven members.
Seven people.
Yes.
Joe, uh, thanks everyone for the confidence.
Uh, we have no old business items, nor new business, which brings us to thirteen.
Oh, miss, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, or, or Mr. Mayor, I do have, uh, a, a new business item, or old business, maybe I can ask the question, and you can tell me, uh, which it would be. But I have, uh, I'd like to address a concern, so it's probably going to be new business, about the tourism district meetings and grants. I would like, I had asked, I went online to look up some minutes from the tourism district about how the grants were approved in the past, and I was kind of shocked to find that we only had three sets of minutes since going back to two thousand sixteen, or whenever it was formed, that are actually on the agenda, on, on the website. I do see that on the agendas, we do call for the approval of minutes, and from what I understand, that does happen every meeting, so the minutes are approved. I just, I just would like to know, first question is, why, why are these minutes not on our website? Is there a reason? I can't imagine there would be, but should they all be put on there? I'm sure that Karen's got them all, and they can be scanned, uploaded.
Yes.
Joe?
So if you have them all, can you put them all on the website?
Yes.
All right.
So it's not a problem.
Why don't we do that?
Okay.
Is that all right?
Second, my second question is the, the taping of them, is, it's, uh, they were at nine o'clock, I couldn't be there last Friday to see it because I had a concern about the, how the grants are done. So can I ask that those are taped and posted, uh, on our YouTube channel on our website, the same way that, uh, and then it'd be for staff too, I mean, whoever can't be there would want to be able to see a video of it. Can I ask that we include that, or actually that all our committees are on, that all our committees are taped? Because we moved those committee meetings here on purpose so that we could tape them, and I heard these, these meetings aren't being taped.
Karen?
They, all of them can be taped if we want them taped, yeah. I mean, not if we want them, but if, if the council liked them taped, yes.
Sure, uh, two more people to work. Okay, is that what you want, make a motion, please?
I make a motion that we post all the minutes on the website, and the, we do going forward, tape the, um, tourism district meetings and post them in a similar fashion that we do other committee meetings.
Is there a, a...
Seconds.
Second, please. All right, we have that, any future, uh, further discussion? Roll call, please. You're spending money, so let's have a roll call.
Alderman Ludvixson?
Aye.
Alderman Delick?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Messer?
Aye.
Uh, Alderman Rosenthal?
The best for last, I, vote aye.
Motion passes five zero.
And Mr. Mayor, one more thing, uh,
Yes, sir.
about how we do the grants. The grants seem to come in, I don't know that those things would pass muster even with the very beginning auditor, as far as being able to explain what we're paying for when we do this. I get the process of the grants, I get the agreement that we have, how much money is supposed to be allotted to the grants, but the backup for these grants come in, and they kind of look like they're reimbursements for, uh, cost of booking rooms, more than promoting Prospect Heights. So I would ask that we, maybe at the next tourism meeting, discuss that these grants have to be focused, like they're supposed to be, on bringing tourism and bringing room rentals to Prospect Heights, and do like we did when we first put this in place. We would rent, they would rent ads on the, uh, two ninety-four billboard saying, "Here, stop and stay at the, um, you know, at the Hilton," or whatever, and that, that's the purpose of it. So I, I want, I want to make sure that that's what they're doing going forward, because these grants are unexplainable as to how they promote Prospect Heights, for the ones that were just passed.
All right, let's take a look at that, the, uh, who's our, uh, who's our treasurer's secretary on that group?
Secretary in terms of taking the minutes, it would be me, but the, um, Sherry always shows up for the minutes at the meetings, and...
Sherry's at all the meetings.
She's, and she's the one that gets all the grants.
And she works on the grants.
Yes.
All right, so, uh, uh, how do you want to do, uh, verbalize that, so I want to... You just made a motion, right?
Well, I, I would, I would like to make a motion that we require the hotels in their grant applications to show how the dollars are being expended to promote Prospect Heights, and not just reimburse for costs that they, that they occur on their daily basis, so that we, we, we can see a direct promotion of Prospect Heights and the grant money that we expend, uh, through their applications.
I will second that.
I think we have a second, but, so that's fine, uh, we have a second, we have a motion. Uh, any further discussion?
I would just like, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I would just like to mention, I attended the meeting with the, with the purpose of learning how they do their grants. Uh, I had hoped to be able to ask a question, they didn't have that as part of their agenda, and, uh, I have real concerns about what they're doing and how they're doing it, and I personally would like to hear from, if it's the chair or somebody who come, to come here and tell us how they do it, what criteria they use for determining how much money one of the hotels gets versus the other. To me, it seemed like, I had more concerns by not hearing a lot of this than I had going to the meeting. I went initially to the meeting to learn, uh, but it raised more questions attending than I had at the beginning.
For public questions or to the agenda?
No.
Mr. Mayor, pardon me?
There, go ahead.
Um, to address the concerns you raise, um, it, it likely, the requirement that the, these committees have to report to the elected officials. So, uh, I would suggest a motion requiring the presence of the committee chair to provide a report to the elected officials at the, whatever meeting, the next meeting or a meeting that you desire, uh, with a focus on explaining how grant monies are expended and awarded.
What their objectives are that they're using for awarding the monies, and how they determine the amount that goes to each hotel.
So I think that could be a motion, um, requiring their attendance to explain.
I, I, we have a motion on the floor already, don't we?
Yes.
We do, you can, would you like to amend this?
Yeah, I amend the motion.
All right, so let's do a single motion. A motion, um, requiring, uh, I'm sorry, do we pass the, pass the, the videotaping? We did.
Yes.
All right, so a motion requiring attendance of the tourism, uh, the, uh, tourism district or tourism board chair at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting to, uh, explain how grants are awarded and monies are, are dispersed to various entities within the city.
With, the entities, it appears to me that the grants go to the various different hotels.
That's, I think, that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe you can give a copy of the, uh...
Oh, we have a written agreement on that whole process.
I'm sorry?
The agreement, I think that's spelled out, the agreement.
Yes.
In the agreement? Okay.
Maybe you can get a copy of that.
Yeah, let's circulate the agreement right away.
Okay.
But we have a motion, though.
We have a motion on the floor, so...
A second?
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please?
Alderman Rosenthal?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson? Alderman Ludvixson?
Aye.
Alderman Messer?
Aye.
Alderman Delick?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero to our clerk.
Karen, if you would disseminate the agreement that
The ordinance.
we all know about and, uh, follow as closely as possible. And Sherry should be present, uh, to, uh, educate us all better on the dollars and cents portion of, uh, the agreement. All right, where were we, Joe?
Uh, is there any other new business?
Prove of warrants?
Yes, sir. Item thirteen.
Okay, so expenditures for this period, um, regular expenditures, um, of one hundred sixty-nine thousand, three hundred two dollars, thirty-four cents, plus payroll postings, eight thirty-one, twenty eighteen, of a hundred and forty thousand, five hundred twenty-three dollars, ninety-one cents, plus wheel, in body, and motor of five thousand, one hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty-nine cents, total warrants, and the amount of three hundred fifteen thousand, seventeen dollars and eighty-four cents.
Motion to approve the warrants is, uh, is that it?
Some move.
Second.
Bring a motion, we have a second, any questions, any warrants? Roll call, please.
Alderman Ludvixson?
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Aye.
Alderman Delick?
Aye.
Alderman Messer?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Motion passes five zero.
Item fourteen is public comments?
Uh, we, we do not have any.
Okay, uh, there's no executive session scheduled for tonight, which brings us to seventeen adjournment.
Motion to adjourn, please.
So moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.